Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to our second meeting this evening. And I first ask if you would please uh rise and join me. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your love for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda this evening is to approve the donation from Clark Companies. The Board of Education of the Delaware Academy Central School District at Delhi, here and called the Board or the District, has received an offer from the Clark Companies of Delhi, New York to make an in-kind donation of work, materials and services associate associated with installation and subsequent maintenance of a synthetic turf system with virgin EPD and rubber infill on Dave Kelly Field, contingent on voter approval of a capital project as enumerated in Clark's letter to the Superintendent of Schools dated January eighteenth, twenty twenty four, known as the donation offer. Now, the Board of Education hereby resolves as follows. The Board, in principle, accepts Clark Company's donation offer with deep appreciation for Clark Company's generosity and their demonstrated and noteworthy commitment to the students of Delaware Academy. The Board's acceptance of the donation offer pursuant to this resolution is contingent and subject to the Board's further approval of a definitive donation agreement and construction contract between Clark Companies and the District, including terms and conditions to be reviewed and as recommended by District Legal Counsel. Like the motion, please, to approve the donation?
Same vote.
Is that a second?
Second.
I want to thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Nate? Lucy? And Sean? Okay, the motion is carried. We'll move on to discussion on ballot propositions for the capital project with no action to be taken.
So I was asked previously where this would, should this be approved, uh where this would land in terms of the secret process. And since we met last time, I did gather additional information that it would not require going through that process again uh because the project is uh not sus- is is substantially equivalent to what was on the proposition to last time. So it would not uh require that. We're still within the allowable timeline. Uh should the Board want to move forward with another proposition, um to put this up for a vote. The donation itself uh does not require a public vote to accept the donation. The Board has the authority to accept that donation, as you just did. Um the reason that we would need to go back out for a vote is because this was, this donation was contingent upon the District's continued um intention and commitment to resurfacing of the track. Um and the other components that we had heard following the last vote that the community was still interested in pursuing. The lower field uh with the uh with those improvements as were in the previous proposition, uh lights on the upper field. Some of the rationale for that being contingent upon that is because they're considering the construction uh of that would be required associated with the donation would be coming across the track, bringing equipment across the tack track. There would be damage to that area potentially in order to effectively install um that that uh that donation. So uh truly, the District would need to commit to still the resurfacing of that and the other pieces that uh were inherent within that. So with those questions addressed, I guess the Board can engage in conversation.
You want to talk about timing, you mean? Is that kind of what we're onto here? Timing of the resolution or proposition?
We start, we we could do that.
I think we had determined at the last meeting that the things that we would put on the project were all of the things that we had agreed upon before that were considering less the the turf field. So all of the things that that Kelly had enumerated. I think we had agreed at the last meeting that those are the the things that would go into this to this next project, so. We did, so we, I personally think we're ready to make a decision on that because we literally went around and said, each person said yes. Individually, they were in favor of keeping everything from the last one.
Yep, yep. No, I think we had agreed on that at the at the last meeting.
I'm still in agreement, but I never did follow up. I'm looking at the image of how much the softball field is going to overlay on that modified track.
Oh, right.
It it don't worry about it. I mean, I want to see it, but I just remembered. Sure, I asked that, so.
So, timing wise, um at the next meeting, which would be the twenty sixth of this month, we would have the language and write that date for the next, for the vote. So if the Board wanted to proceed with the project and putting it uh back up to vote, then you would move on a call to vote at the next regular meeting on the twenty sixth. That would include the language of the proposition, which would start that forty-five day timeline. Forty-five day timeline for public notice. Within that would be an opportunity for another community event night, information night, that type of thing. And then that would put us around mid-April for a vote just on this proposition.
In my mind, I'm not quite sure, um since the um Clark uh family is donating the uh turf, artificial turf field, will that be part of the proposition at all? That's what I thought. It needs, there'll be everything that we proposed last time minus the turf field because we didn't.
As far as athletics, as far as athletics, yes. Now, unless bond counsel recommends otherwise. So bond counsel may want there to be recognition so that it's clear to the taxpayers, recognition of the donation, but that the District is not assuming the approximate cost associated with that donation. But that would just be for your information. It's not, nothing that gets voted on. That's just a for your information attached to the other stuff that's getting voted on, right? Kind of? That, yes, yes, um unless bond counsel comes back, you know, with a different recommendation. But that is my understanding, yes. So that it's it's clear that should this be passed, that it would include the acceptance of that donation. But that, I just think that would be confusing. But I know you have to do what they say. I understand that, but I just think that would be confusing to somebody. And part of it too has to do with how um the Office of Facilities Planning approves that at the state and gives it a project number. Because in order for the state to approve that, keep in mind that we still have to include this as as um, you know, site work, incidental work. And for the state to give that a project number, there has to be recognition of that um inclusive in the anticipated work that the District wants to do.
Given that timeframe, we would have a sometime in April vote.
Mm-hmm.
And then budget vote in May, a month later.
And then a month later is the budget vote.
Does that makes a lot of sense that to put them together?
I think it'd be more confusing to have them together because having, like, voted in May. I have two, that would be two are.
It's separate.
I agree.
Maybe so.
I think it's more confusing if we're together. The law allows it either way, so that's that's a decision of the Board.
Sure.
Also allows us to get in the queue with SCV a month earlier project.
Right, so in our last meeting, when we had shared the projected costs associated uh with consideration for escalation over uh twenty twenty five versus pushing up to twenty twenty six, you know, it was clear the time is of the essence. Not to rush the decision, but just as a factor for your consideration. No, I think we saw from that that it would help important it is to get it started soon, I agree, rather than later. I can't get done. I gotta wait till there's talk. Thank you. Any other question, comments? We're good with the scope that we've identified and we'll language together for the next meeting. And looking for an April vote.
Kelly, have you talked about, or have we, I don't think we as a Board, but have you thought about the within that forty-five day timeline, what the community meeting plan will be or meetings plan or, you know, the outreach, I guess?
Yeah, there there's not a whole lot changing this time, so there's not a whole lot of new information um from what was proposed last time with consideration for the turf. We're looking at the same materials, um you know, the the same information is still there. So it really only necessitates one of those community meetings. I would recommend moving forward with a forum that I thought was particularly well-received last time, where everyone had an opportunity, had the different tables set up. And earlier, everyone had an opportunity to have questions specific to the architects, questions specific to the Board members, questions specific to um the uh construction managers, engineers, so that anybody involved or that has a particular area of expertise, people could have their questions answered with detailed information directly from the source. And it was more efficient and, you know, more attention given to the specific questions. We had, and we had students uh at a booth as well. So it would take a similar format.
I just, I I I I don't know, I just want to make sure that the community is aware, fully aware that they're actually not voting on whether or not there's turf. That's not part of this proposal, if I'm understanding this correctly.
That's
They're voting on everything, so the proposition is going to be everything except the actual turf field.
The pr- the proposition is is technically that the community is authorizing us to spend X amount of dollars
Right.
on athletic field improvements. Um we have been explicit and transparent and honest with what our intention is for what are all the details that that means. And so this time, yes, it is under the assumption, we want to be clear that although you're voting on the everything else and giving the District the authority to spend the money on the everything else, that we are moving forward with full intention to accept the donations tonight to include that uh in the installation of that as part of the overall project. So although when you come to vote on the um, you know, on on going out to bond for everything else, technically not voting on turf or not turf. But it is, it would be the intention from the feedback that I've received that yes, the project will include installation of that turf. Just that piece would be donated, which is why that's the piece that doesn't need to be voted on.
After the public comments, will they, will you be asking individual Board members for comments? Or not this time? Because this is a special meeting.
We don't have that on there, but we're, we're certainly.
Well, no, I would comment now rather than if we're we're not going to have a specific time.
I think the way it's fine, I think we could comment now.
It's, now it's mine too. Okay, well, I'd like to explain um why I said May. Uh I knew if I accepted, it would be tatted out to saying um the school would go ahead with artificial artificial turf. I intentionally wore this shirt that was with basketball, but it says trust the process, and I do trust the process. We will find out, you know, uh there are a segment of the population of our community who feel that the money involved in the turf, artificial turf was too much. And so the generosity of the Clark family will wipe that group out of any disfavor. There is another segment of the population, which I don't know which will be more. But I do trust the process that um are against the turf field, uh the artificial turf field because of possible uh long ra- uh long range ramifications because of technology happening so fast. And there's also segments who are concerned about the footprint we're leaving on our planet Earth. And so I I guess that's I I voted no because I felt that that segment had to be heard and we'll we'll find out, um but I do trust the process.
Anybody else? Want to say anything?
About the, thank you, um about the students. I feel like in the last capital project forum that we had, I think they got lost in it all. Um it didn't seem that well attended. And I know there's a huge amount of support from our student body to have the synthetic turf. They're playing on it, sometimes they're at a disadvantage. I think we've been pretty responsible about the way we've gone about it. And we have this amazing opportunity to to have it here for our students. My biggest reason for supporting it is because I believe it's going to equalize the playing field for our athletes. Being a mother of both two soccer players, male and female, I know my daughter played on that field five times. And we've also been told with um natural grass that we have to limit the play. And I think it's important for our students to have the maximum playability and to be out there every day for practices and for games. So anyway, I support the progress in its entirety.
For me, it's just I want to make sure that voters have the ultimate say. And so they will be able to do that with this next proposition, this next vote. So that's, that makes me feel better.
Yeah, so, you know, we've done a ton of due diligence on this. Um we've been talking about this for a long, long time. I think it's been a good process, moving back to what Lucy said about trusting the process. And I think we've taken in a lot of input. For me, it boils down to, you know, four or five key factors. I find, you know, after looking at a lot of the information in depth about the science and safety, I find it to be reasonable, I find um in general, the direction of the industry to accept the reasonfulness of it, that um this is some, this is a viable alternative and it's used more and more so um all the time. Uh for us, utilization is huge here. You know, we've done a lot of calculations. Jeff has provided a ton of information about what our expectations of our space really are. Um our footprint has expanded dramatically over the years. It's not the same as it was twenty years ago or thirty years ago with all the additional teams that we have added to our, you know, footprint in general. And that that does include the Legion. But it's it's all about utilization for our very small area of flat surface up near our bathrooms, near our parking lot, near our lights, near our scoreboards. Um I think that best addresses that utilization, something in in the way that uh grass can. We've really just done, we've asked all those questions and that, that's what it's come down to. Another factor is, you know, we're playing on this now. Our league is moving to this. Playoffs in most sports are on this. And it would almost be like, if we're not comfortable using it ourselves, how can we let ourselves have away games? Because now, um, you know, close to half of what we do away is on the surface today. At the varsity, at the varsity level anyway, it'll be more so on on lower levels. From a financial standpoint, you know, uh we've got this generous gift. I want to say again, thank you, Chris President, um for this wonderful gift from your family. And um that only makes it better and more viable for us. There's zero tax impact for this. The Clarks have generously generously taken maintenance off the table, which I know was a concern, downstream maintenance, as well as recycling when its useful life is realized. Those were two factors that came out that were um decision points and factors we had um considered extensively. So those those are off the table. And, you know, finally, in fact, I think what Lauren said, it's really about uh our students. And I feel an overwhelming support from the students. I believe it's about, you know, access, equity, opportunity. I'd like to see as many people using our main field here as possible, gym classes, um without restriction. And I think ultimately in that student voice, um I know it's been great having our student Board members. Aaron's here today, going back to Memphis Tyler, um Branigan. You know, I I heard a lot of really great commentary about the way the students were supporting this and I, that spoke to me in a huge way. So I think in in summary of all that, that's really kind of my own personal um statement about our our process and due diligence, and that's why I voted to support this.
Anybody else?
Just to piggyback on what Seth said, my reasoning for accepting the donation, Christopher, thank you very much, is it really did address my three biggest concerns. Um that I voiced, you know, the installation, the maintenance and the removal. I'm still skeptical about this, you know, magic that's going to happen with the turf field. But um I, it's, like I said, it addressed my biggest concerns and so that's why I voted to accept the donation, and thank you, Chris.
You know what we're doing, right? What's that?
You know what we got going for the next meeting?
Yes, yes, I have my charge.
Okay.
We will move on to public comments. Board of Education leaves open communication with our parents, students, teachers, personnel and district residents is very important. For this reason, the Board sets aside time of beginning and end of each other's meeting for public comments. However, in order to focus on tonight's previously settled agenda, it's a general rule, the Board will not be able to respond to your comments and questions at this time. We may refer your comments and questions to Administration for follow-up, or we may add the subject of your comments to the agenda of a future meeting. Either way, please be assured that we welcome and take your comments very seriously. The Board asks each person to limit comments to not more than two minutes. In order for the District Clerk to maintain accurate records of the meeting, each individual is requested to state his or her name and address. And again, I will, um judging from the group that we have in attendance, I will stress that we please keep our our comments to two minutes so that anyone and everyone who's here and has something that they'd like to say can can be heard.
My name is Matt Kristen, I live at twenty-six Elstree. So I came just to show my support for accepting the donation. And I know this is a, you know, a formal meeting, but I think it's a very exciting thing that's happening. And thanks to Clark Family, it's like a major understatement. Uh I think it's going to change, if if this goes through, it's going to change the usefulness of a big piece of our property out there and it's going to make school a lot more fun for a lot of kids, the equity part of it. And I think it's important to point out that a lot of the people and I I hear what Lucy's saying, and it actually, you know, I hadn't heard it said that way and it makes a lot of sense to me. And hearing Rose say that her main concerns were the install, the cost of installation maintenance and and recycling, I think that's the case for a lot of people who voted against it. And I think that putting it up for a vote again, I personally believe you're going to see a much different result. So thanks, yeah, to the Clark Family, uh and to the Board for accepting their donation. I think it's really exciting.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. I've pulled this around in my mind a lot of times, how it's been approached this. I I also accept the generosity of the Clark Company, not a lack for the community. I just want to get some clarification, hopefully this will take my two minutes, some clarification. On the vote, the field is going to be on the vote. The proposition, or not. It's going to be everything including the field or the field is a figure complet that it's going in no matter which way the vote goes. The other thing is that, um and we had this meeting, I was grateful to be invited to the construction meeting. We talked and we agreed that there's no silver bullet to this, it's very complicated. But I think the vote is not, was not necessarily the expense. The vote was more of a philosophical, environmental, uh sustainable future. That's that's what the vote was, the safety issue. Because the vote was presented that it's not going to be added, it's not a taxpayer's expense, even though somewhere the dollars come from the cash. Some people I talked to, it feels, they feel a little disrespect that no matter what, we'll get what we want anyway, you know. I did do my due due diligence, I did go over to the uh maintenance facility and had a really good discussion with the maintenance people there, David and Krista Mayo, I reviewed all the materials there. The school has bought the right fertilizer, the right seed. They also bought the right equipment. Their main concern is that no field can sustain all the activities, that they can't keep up.
Done.
Okay, but that's my comments, I'm still not for it. I don't think this was the right way to go, even though it was a generous presentation. I will give a fair for the comments, whatever the vote is. I wish everybody the best of luck. Ten, twelve, fourteen years from now, I could be here to see what the result is. And also the maintenance, just one last thing. Said that Jeff has tried to do due due diligence to get, to move the practices around, but sometimes I'm talking to Jeff.
Thank you. Anybody else said something over this way?
I'm not here to, to curate what the Board members said. I agree with um all of what was said, very well stated. I just wanted to take my free time to publicly, thanks to Clark Family. I I heard stories when I moved to Delhi fourteen years ago about how Chris's father took care of our athletes and provided opportunities for them. And Chris is following in his footsteps. And my promise back to the Clark Family will be that every single one of our students will, I will find a way to teach more and learn and benefit from the donation if we move forward with what's proposed. So thank you very much again.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other quick comments? Time I'll remind you of our upcoming Board of Education meeting dates. Our next regular Board of Education meeting and budget workshop, I guess it's that time of year, is Monday, February twenty-sixth in the High School Media Library Center at five P M. It's anticipated the Board will convene an executive session at five P M. and return to open session at six P M. The deadline for items to be placed on the Board agenda is the Tuesday prior to each Board of Education meeting. If you have any questions, please contact the district clerk at six zero seven seven four six one three zero six. Taking motion to adjourn the meeting. So, if you have a second? That's it. It's turn.